Welcome to the Winthrop School Committee Meeting on Monday, excuse me, Wednesday, September 8th. The meeting will be held here at the Neil Shapiro Center for Performing Arts here at the Winthrop High School at 400 Main Street in Winthrop. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabienko? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Present.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Present. The meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Mr. Matucci, will you lead us to the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none. Move on to delegates and visitors. There are none. First off, we have the minutes to approve, minutes of July 12th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. Second by Phil Boncory. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Now, we have the minutes of August 2nd, 2021. Can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry?
Second.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Now, we have the minutes of August 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion for those minutes?
Motion.
Motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on them? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay. Now, we have our financial and business procedures, starting off with warrant SVW 22-2 in the amount of $260,757.10. Can I get a motion for that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. And seconded by Mr. Boncory. Any discussion on the warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up, we have a warrant SVW 22-3 in the amount of $165,912.19. Do I have a motion for that amount?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry. Seconded by Ms. Swope. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Moving on to payroll warrant SPW 22-2 in the amount of $187,712.44. Do I have a motion for that amount for the payroll warrant?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Abstain.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstain. We have a second payroll warrant SPW 22-3 in the amount of $326,491.47. Do I have a motion on that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Abstain.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstain. Next up is building and grounds. We'll take them individually because there are some contingencies on some of these. We first have the Winthrop High School class of 2022 car wash. Can I get a motion approved?
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up, we have the William P. Gorman PTO meeting dates. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Swope?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next, we have Winthrop Youth Football. I believe there was a contingency, but that has been resolved for the insurance binder and payment, so we can entertain a motion to approve that rental.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boncory. Any discussion?
Just I would ask about if the payments paid up on this.
Yes. That's, I just said that again. No balances from last year, and the insurance binder has been paid, I've been told.
Yes.
Patty, can I get a vote?
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next, we have Winnoc. There's a contingent of payment of a current invoice, but I'd like to add to this motion to waive the rental fee. If I can get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We have subcommittee reports, I believe, report on policy from our subcommittee. I believe that was your chairman. That was for the...
Yes. For the masks.
Yes.
Smoking and tobacco.
And smoking and tobacco.
Oh, smoking and tobacco, yes. So, we have revised the smoking and tobacco policy to basically tighten the policy and include the appearance of tobacco using the use of tobacco products. This is the combination. It basically combined two very similar policies that were in place currently, and it doesn't, it, in our, it was to make it stronger and to make it very clear that it is not allowed, the use of any tobacco products is not allowed in any of, during activities or when students are away, and then, and it includes not only the students but also the staff.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
We also talked about light tobacco products to...
So, does it the appearance? And it resembles for the appearance of?
The appearance of.
Yep.
Do you have anything further? Ms. Barry?
Yes, because that also, that also includes like vapes and pens and...
Yeah, there's a separate policy for that as well.
Yep.
The idea was to clean the policy, take two policies, merge them, clean them up a little bit, and make, to take two policies and merge them, clean them up a little bit, make them more, make them more easily understandable to staff and students so that there was really no gray area when it came to discussion around tobacco or use of tobacco products, or the appearance of use of tobacco products by students or staff.
Thank you, superintendent. Okay. Superintendent's report. Ms. Howard?
Yes. So, let's start with the opening of school. So, the opening of school went very smoothly. We had all of our teachers back on the 30th and the 31st. On the 30th, it was a combination of staff being in their buildings, meeting with each other in a smaller environment with the new staff per building, working with principals on building, direct building issues, so that the staff that's in that building wasn't hearing from the larger school district just yet, but they were getting sort of their feet wet in their classrooms, looking at protocols, spending time meeting each other, hearing from the principal, looking at their classrooms, getting classrooms set up. Many of our teachers did pop in over the summer. We had summer programs going, so some of our classrooms were limited in terms of staff being able to get in and set up their rooms, so the teachers were very excited to do that. And then, on day two, which was the 31st, our entire staff came here to the auditorium and to the theater and had to listen to me for a good 15 or 20 minutes, and really just an upbeat meeting talking about where we're going and where we're headed, and how excited everybody was, you know, to sort of be together. We're sharing a common theme this year about positivity, and if you see some of our folks walking around with T-shirts, each staff member received a T-shirt that talked about the wind and how the wind can change and tide can change, and our goal is to change with that and sort of roll with the tide and shift with the wind. So, it was pretty upbeat. We played a couple of pretty awesome videos that I can share with you all after this meeting, a thank you letter that was on YouTube that was written by somebody who was just amazing in their thought about what it's like to be a teacher just in general, and how important it is because of the impact you have on kids and really just pumping people up. And we followed that up with a clip from the 1980 Olympic team, Herb Brooks clip, and then we introduced Mike Arizioni. And as many in the community know, Mike is, you know, lifelong Winthrop guy, very talented, motivational speaker and hockey player, and gives so much to the school through his foundations and his golf tournaments, and really cares deeply about our kids, not just athletically, but well-rounded kids. He's contributed to winter coats for students in the past, he's contributed to technology, he's contributed to athletics, you name it, and the Winthrop Foundation, which is, I believe, in memory of his parents. He's always, always there to give us an extra hand, so I reached out to him. Ironically, he has three grandchildren in the system, so, and he babysits his three grandchildren. So, he firsthand got a taste of COVID babysitting during school day and understanding how to get kids onto Zoom, and he told some pretty neat stories about how his little grandchildren were playing him while they were splitting the screen and doing some of their own YouTube and games while they were supposed to be doing Go Math. So, that was pretty funny. But then, he really gave a heartfelt speech to the teachers and sort of like kind of a back and forth discussion almost about what it's like to be part of a winning team, and sort of the theme of all being sort of regular people with this challenge in front of you, similar to what happened to the Olympic team of just a bunch of regular guys going on the ice and coming out Olympic gold medal winners, and how important family and team and being part of a group like that motivated that Olympic team, and he sort of likened that to the success that we've had here in the Winthrop Public Schools. So, the feedback was great. I've known Mike almost my whole life. He's still kind of, he's still kind of a cool guy, you know, and you know that he was, he has the status of being a gold medal winner, but he really gave us a good boost the first day of school. So, I think folks left here energized and ready to get back to their schools and get down to business of opening schools. So, it was great to, you know, have them go through that. Some of the things that they did when they went back around their getting prepared to have our students is going through all kinds of trainings that are necessary, not just from the state, but some that we've put in place to make sure our staff is prepared for safety, understanding many things. So, I'll just give you a quick little rundown. They did the 603 CMR regulations, they did a review of the federal and state laws around education, they reviewed the Civil Rights Education Act Title IX, reviewed 504, students with disabilities, the Equal Educational Opportunity Act. They went through some training on FERPA and student records, some discussion around discrimination with age and sex discrimination. We had them kick off their introduction to Alice, which we have not forgotten about. It was sort of our, really our focus prior to COVID, getting everybody Alice trained, and that's how to deal with active invasions and school shootings. Those are still happening, and so we still need to be mindful and trained in that. We also put them through quite a bit with the safety procedures and around COVID and the COVID protocols that we still have in place. A little bit of information about our enrollment. So, as of this week, we have 1,899 students enrolled, which is a little, up a little bit from last year, quite a bit from last year, and also pretty consistent with what we've had in years past. So, at the Gorman Fort Banks, we have 484 students in pre-K through two. At the Cummings School, we have 423 students in grades three through five. The middle school, 423 students in six, seven, and eight, and at the high school, nine through 12 and a handful of our post-graduates, 569 students. Enrollment is increasing, and we're having people enroll just about every day. We're receiving new students. And we're cross-referencing all of our current enrollment, also with students who have left us, either because they've moved or they're attending the vocational school. I think these numbers are pretty solid. We still have a little scrubbing to do of those numbers, and as more students come in, we'll keep you up to date on that. Our school setups, just to give you a little overview, we, although distancing is not required by the Department of Education, masks are required, but social distancing and distancing within the classroom is not. What we decided as a leadership team, especially in our cafeterias, that's the one place our kids will take their masks off every day. So, it sort of doesn't make sense to have them wear their masks in the classroom but then go into the cafeteria sitting shoulder to shoulder and taking their masks off. So, the impact of that is if somebody is, has a positive test, you know, that circle around them becomes affected, especially if their mask is off. There's new protocols around contact tracing, so if your mask is on and you're within three feet of a positive person, you are a close contact. However, because we participate, and I'll give a little explanation about this in a minute, test and stay, students don't necessarily now have to go home and isolate for seven days. If the mask was on and they were in a classroom and there was a positive student, if they're willing to get tested seven days in a row and parents give that permission, we can allow them to stay. If you're in the cafeteria, however, and your mask is off, there are other implications because you haven't had a mask on, so the ability to stay in school is not necessarily there. So, we decided to keep all of our students, although it's not fun and it's, you know, it does inhibit the social interaction a little bit, but I can tell you kids are creative when they're sitting in rows and three feet apart. All four of our schools have our kids in individual seats in the cafeteria, three feet apart from each other to minimize the impact while they're eating. So, and in the classrooms, especially at the elementary level, we're doing our best when we can to keep kids three feet apart, but it's not, as you know from hybrid learning, because of not being able to fit everybody in at three feet apart, we cannot achieve it everywhere, but it is still a goal for us whenever we can do it. The other things that we're continuing to do is our cleaning protocols are still in place, frequent hand washing is still being enforced and encouraged. Again, classroom, we're working to achieve three-foot distancing whenever possible, and we applied for and received approval for the test and stay program through the Department of Education. This allows for exposed students to remain in school as long as the parents have signed off on an agreement that allows us to binax test students who are identified as a close contact every day for seven days. This includes our student athletes, so if students have a game on a Saturday, we have to have staff there to test them Saturday before they actually go on the field. If they have a game Monday, we have to do the testing on Sunday and Monday. So, we're working on that with our internal staff. Department of Education puts it out there that it's at no cost and they're, so the binax tests are not at a cost, but the amount of work that it takes to test multiple students on a given day far exceeds the staffing that we typically have in place, which is one nurse per school. So, our nurses are still dealing with, you know, general nursing duties, including immunization and all their data collection and paperwork that they have to do, plus seeing kids who have typical illness and kids who fall down or get hurt during school, as well as our staff, because our school nurses are also responsible for our staff. So, we have, through COVID funding, which is part of the ESAR money that has come in, we have incorporated some CNAs, Certified Nursing Assistance, like we had last year, to help with that process, and the state is still working out how they're getting us people to help binax testing. So, just as early as this morning, we had our football team at 7:45 on the football field, and we were binax testing as many students as parents have agreed to let us test, which I believe is almost all of them. The reason we had to do that is we had a student who had a positive COVID finding, and that particular student is on the football team and practice. It's the same with any other team that we have. It could happen with soccer, it could happen in a classroom. So, what happens is the nursing staff and allegedly somebody that the Department of Ed is sending us right now, they're having us use folks from Action Ambulance, but these people are not staged in our buildings five days a week. So, we have to call them to come in to support us, and we're sort of at their, at their will. So, having the Certified Nursing Assistance does free up one of our nurses, our main nurse, Tara Bowie, who's our COVID Nurse Lead, as well as depending upon what school we can ship them around to help and assist with that process. We're also training our athletic trainer and some of our coaches as we move through this process to be able to conduct the binax swab testing so that they can also assist us when there is a need. So, we sent out the consent form to parents, I believe, Monday. Many of our parents have already signed that and sent it back. It's electronic, so it's through a Google Doc, so we collect the information in real time. And we encourage parents, if they so choose, it's not mandatory. So, if a parent doesn't agree to the binax testing for their child, that's okay. However, if their child becomes a close contact, we don't have permission to allow them to stay in school, wear their mask, and have us test them every day. So, if they're not approved and the parents haven't agreed to it, we understand and respect that, but in a case like that, a student would have to go home for the seven days and isolate at home because we don't have the ability to test them first thing in the morning. So, this is a work in progress for us. We're working out the kinks just like every other public school across the Commonwealth, and I feel like between Tara Bowie and Meredith Hurley's support and the interaction we have with the Department of Education, they have a hotline that we're able to use, that we're doing well with it right now. It's definitely a work in progress, and hopefully we won't have to use it often, but we do feel like we have the support and we have all of the binax testing and the storage components and the reporting component, because once you test the students, there's also paperwork and reporting that needs to go to the state, and as of right now, I believe we have that under control. I will keep the committee up to date. We also are very mindful that if there is a huge uptick in COVID numbers within the school system, which we are hoping we don't have, that we always have the option to go a little bit deeper and bring in pooled testing. And again, from the state, they let you know that this is free of charge, but the management of it is not necessarily free of charge. So, pooled testing is testing people, everybody on a weekly rotation. After having lots of conversation with the school nurses and with Meredith Hurley about our numbers in the district and the numbers of vaccinated staff we have, which we will have an accurate number once we give them in the app, so that when we move to our differentiated mask policy, when we're allowed to take these off, people will be able to upload their vaccinations, and we'll have a pretty accurate number of students and staff who are vaccinated. Our first survey that we did with staff, we believe about 85% to 90% of our staff is already vaccinated fully. We'll have a better number of students once we're able to put that app out, which is a voluntary app for parents to upload their child's vaccination status to a portal, which gets reviewed by a medical site in Cambridge. So, we don't review it or verify it. The medical site reviews it and verifies it, and they alert us to whether or not the individual who submitted their COVID vaccination card is now approved to be considered a fully vaccinated person. So, having that information will help us with contact tracing, certainly help us when we are able to move to our differentiated mask policy in which parents can request and staff can request an exemption, which is I'd like to take my mask off because I'm vaccinated. We, I'm not going to make them prove vaccination to us directly. For privacy purposes, we're putting that app in place so that folks can feel confident that nobody's really digging into what type of vaccination you had, and also confident for us, confidence for us that they're actually vaccinated, and that it's an approved vaccination that was verified by the state. So, more, more to come on that. We're watching the COVID numbers daily. Meredith and Tara meet every single day and talk about that. The contact tracing of one or two kids can be hours worth of work, so I applaud our staff that is working Saturdays and Sundays and nights to be able to do that, because once something comes through Maven that we have a positive student, which is a system that only Meredith Hurley has access to as the town health nurse, that sparks up us to start to figure out what the contact tracing is so that we don't bring kids into school the next morning with, and expose anybody else or, you know, cause any unnecessary disruption of teaching and learning. So, staffing, we'll go through that, and we still have some openings. When you see your packet and we get to the personnel section, you'll see we've had a lot of transition. We've done exit surveys with anyone who has left, and I can tell you that the majority of people that have left us have moved to other parts of the state or down, what I call down south, which is the South Shore. Anything past Milton to me is south, and anything past Square One Mall is north. So, getting to Winthrop is becoming increasingly more difficult with the traffic. We've had a lot of marriages and a lot of movement of staff, and we have recruited quite, quite a crew of new talented staff members that will be reflected in our personnel. Reestablished residency, which is a policy that the school committee adopted a couple of years ago in which any child transitioning into grade three, six, or nine has to reestablish their residency so that we can continue to monitor who lives in Winthrop and is allowed to go to school here. So, this year, last year, because we weren't in school, that, we only did it for grade three, I believe, and, I'm sorry, three and six, and this year, we did three, six, and nine. About 170 folks that didn't complete the process by the deadline, so I believe the deadline was August 26th, and we had several sessions at different times of the day where parents could come up and just provide copy of their license and their most recent, most recent bill. So, we gave an extension to that, and the extension ends tonight. Parents were notified last week that they missed the deadline, they didn't do what they needed to do in order to establish residency, which technically means your child's not going to be able to go to school here anymore because you didn't prove that you lived here. So, we gave them a few extra days to do that, specific timelines, and I am hopeful that as of tonight, that the majority of the folks who didn't accomplish that by the end of August have done so. For those folks who haven't, by Sunday, they will receive a letter letting them know that their child is not enrolled with a form that they can submit to speak to an administrator about how to go about that process if they still believe that their child's entitled to go to school here, and that will be done individually. The idea behind that residency policy was very specific, and it was really to keep track of the students who live here and go to school here and protect the financial aspects of what it costs to educate students for all the taxpayers in this community. And although it's annoying, and there are many people that have lived here their whole life and say, you know, I live on X street and you see me every day, everybody has to submit their paperwork. It allows us to keep track of our students because we otherwise don't check to see if you live here unless you move and come back. So, it's proven to keep our numbers where they need to be in terms of our students and really track the enrollment. So, hopefully by tonight, we have that number way down. Just quick numbers on COVID. Since August 25th, we've had 16 positive students reported to us. Those reports go directly, like I said before, through a system to the town health nurse, or a parent can call and tell us that their child had been tested and has come back with a positive test. And we've also had one staff member since the 25th. Of all of those positive students, and a couple of those were in the summer, 29 of those students have participated in the test and stay program. So, we've only been in school a couple of days, so when kids came back to school, anyone who was positive, the majority of those students' parents signed off so that the students who were close contacts could stay in school. So, that's our effect, that's a way for us to keep kids in school and not send them home, and hopefully we'll continue that. Couple of other quick items. We have two new partnerships that I'm really excited about. One is the Goals Program, and that's a program for ninth and 10th grade students with a focus on social, emotional, and academic challenges that they may be facing. We're going to have a series of speakers and a curriculum that incorporates decision-making, self-awareness, financial literacy, emotional intelligence, and social engagement skill and development, and that's specific to our ninth and 10th grade students. So, sort of beefing them up to understand what it's like to be in high school and what should I be thinking about as I'm preparing myself to eventually get out of here and go on to college, or to go into the workforce, or to go into the military. How, how should I be thinking about this? And then, we've also, and... And then we've also, and I'll provide you with a write-up on that so that you can see it, I'll send that to you all in an email. We're just waiting for some additional information from this group. And then, staying with our high school kids, CASA, and CASA has a program called Youth Works, which we tested out this summer, and it was a job skills program in which we're looking at some of our eleventh grade and twelfth grade students who aren't necessarily sure they want to go to college, but they want to do something, or they may know they want to go to college, but they're just not sure to do what. So, this is a program in which students are working with our staff in an after-school sort of program like one of our clubs or our activities, and they are doing soft skill training using research-based curriculum from Junior Achievement and from the Mott Foundation. The curriculums are nationally known and connected to the Common Core ELA standards and Twenty-First Century Learning Skills. These students who are involved in this program also receive CPR and first aid certification by an AHA instructor. They receive one-to-one support each week, and those are some of the club classes that we'll be doing, with access to online supports from Junior Achievement, which includes things like building a resume, financial literacy, and the like. So, we're excited for that partnership, and we're going to have one of our folks from CASA, Jen Ref, who's a well-known member of our community housed here at the high school, working closely with our guidance counselors and our adjustment counselors to identify kids who should be a part of this program or who might want to take advantage of it. So, similar to an after-school club where you would sign up for it, the kids get involved in it, they do job placement, they do job alikes, lots of work around understanding how to do banking, some of the stuff that we want our kids to know when they go off to college, so we don't have to write the check and stick it in the mail and do all that kind of stuff. So, we're excited about those, and I'll provide you with some write-ups on the literature behind those. So, those are two fun things that we're excited about. Just so you know, we've also added, when we were speaking about social, emotional well-being of kids, we've been intently focused on that all through COVID, and part of the COVID funding that we received from the state, one of the focal points that we decided to continue to increase is the use of social counselors and adjustment counselors. So, we have added three full-time social, three full-time school adjustment counselors, which is, right now, a one-year commitment with our planning moving forward, strategic planning about how to keep them as we move forward, but we think they are sorely needed. So, we will have two at the high school, two at the high school, two at coming school, two at the middle school, and one, the person at the coming school also float, if needed, over to the Gorman Fortbank School. But based on our data and our discussions with staff, those were the three areas that we really need some additional support. So, that coupled with the two new programs, coupled with all the work we were doing last year on suicide awareness, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction and adding support systems where we need to. And that's an ongoing and continuous discussion as we continue to air-mark the monies that the state has provided to us to support our students, and whether it's after-school programming, before-school programming, getting our kids to understand what has happened in the last, you know, eighteen months and how to get them ready to continue to be focused and positive. So, lots of work being done there that we could talk about for days and days and days, but I will provide you with some additional information as we move forward with that. It was awesome to see kids back in school. I'll tell you, it's the day that I, with thinking of all summer long, just please give me these kids back in school, because when the kids are back in school, the anxiety level of everybody just kind of comes down a notch. Of course, we're going to have anxiety with the numbers, and if they go up or if they go down, or if there's an outbreak, whatever it might be, but we're used to that now, unfortunately, and we can handle that. It was tough, having our kids not here in the summer and all the changes, we're going to wear masks, we're not going to have to, and now we have to. I could tell you the group of people, it didn't seem to, and some of our students are affected by it, but every child walked through that door with a mask on, and there was little to no complaints from kids. We will work with any child who has struggles with it or not, and our staff did the same thing. They left here masked and they came back masked. It is not what we want. We want to see faces. We know the impact it has covering people's faces. We're very good eye readers, but that only lasts for so long. So, we're hopeful. The Department of Education has remained silent on what's going to happen on October first. I'm hoping that on October first, we have additional information to provide that shows what our rates are in terms of vaccination. It's annoying that it's not going to help our students that cannot get vaccinated yet, so I look forward to seeing what the department has to say about that. Superintendents across the Commonwealth have been very, very vocal about the need for our students to be safe, but also our concerns around being able to see them and how that's going to impact us. So, it's sort of that ping-pong conversation that just goes back and forth, back and forth. So, that's my superintendent report, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Mr. Chairman. I had, first of all, I really applaud your new programs, Lisa. I think that's terrific. I think that will be very helpful, and I love the idea of giving students an opportunity to think about jobs, whether they're going to college or not, because it helps them focus, I believe, in terms of what they might want to do, which every parent would love to see. I did, I have just a question about testing. So, if someone who, if a child has tested positive and they are on the football team and have had close contact with other members of the team, and then we test for seven days the students that have had, been near that child, if the second child comes down with a positive test, do we then start those seven days all over again?
So, that's a question that, again, as a superintendent, the amount of pressure that has been put on us to answer questions that is so outside and so far away from our own area of expertise, this is a good example of that. That's a question that I would ask Tara. It's a very good question. I do know that when somebody does test positive, the positive person cannot be in school. The close contacts can be in school. I know that anytime somebody else becomes positive, we go through the contact tracing piece all over again. So, there may be some cross-crossing of that, but that's certainly a question that I can bring to Tara, and she can answer it. I've read through the guidance and walked through probably about five hundred times the new regulations around close contacts, and they, it is very confusing. I put out a video for parents, it's on our website, you actually can't go on our website unless you click and watch it, and that was done by kids at Conquered Carlisle High School. So, the principal of Conquered Carlisle High School actually put it together, and I'm assuming kids were involved in it. But it was short and to the point, and it made so much sense to me, because it wasn't lots of letters and paragraphs and arrows, and Tara has also put together a flow chart that's on our website as well for parents. But that might have been one of the better presentations I've ever seen.
I think so, too.
And it's pretty clear. This is Tara Bowie's full-time job. So, Tara's come out of the nurse's office at the middle school. We have a nurse replacing her for the school year, and Tara is full-time COVID contact tracing until we don't have to talk about this anymore.
And one final question. Do we, have we had any breakthrough cases with our kids?
So, breakthrough cases meaning people who are, so that's-
That have already been vaccinated.
Kids that were already vaccinated, that's information that is, I would not be privy to. I would be privy to it in a larger conversation as we roll through, so we've been open for four days, but with confidentiality, you know, of records and things like that, until it becomes an issue that the nurse or the town nurse needs to let us know about, I don't believe we would be given that direct information.
Listen, may I, to help you?
Sure.
Out of eighty-three people that tested positive in the past two weeks, which is way too many, forty-three percent of those eighty-three people were breakthrough cases.
So, breakthrough meaning they were already vaccinated?
Yeah, already vaccinated, and they still got a mild case of the Delta variant.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's still open.
Yeah, and so I think that's a good way to put it, in terms of the information that we will receive from the town side, that if, when they talk about groups of people, you know, so I believe Tara will be able to speak about groups of students, but unless there are more than one, you know, it will be hard for her, you know, protecting the student confidentiality.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I have a question. On the test and stay program, you said that you have a majority of parents, a large number of parents who have approved that. Is that still open for them to approve, and is there a deadline, or will that remain open?
Yeah, so it's going to remain, it's going to remain open. I believe, I sent it out myself, I think, I sent it out Friday night to go out to parents on Monday. So, we will resend it again, just like we do the, you know, reestablish residency notification. People get sick of getting the emails, but sometimes you look through your email and you forget. And our principals are also encouraging parents to make a decision, not encouraging them to say yes or no, but encouraging them to please make a decision. The benefit of saying yes to allow us to nasal swab your student is allowing your student to stay in school. So, if you do nothing, or if you say no, which is acceptable, you just have to know that then if your child becomes a close contact, they will have to be at home. There is no remote learning. Teachers will treat it as if your child was absent, so they won't be penalized, they'll be able to make up work, but there won't be a tutor going to your home, there won't be a virtual class that you can participate in. It's really similar, unfortunately, because of, you know, we'd have to double our school again. We don't have the capacity to teach kids that are also at home, and our goal is for that to happen very rarely. So, we'll be sending that back out again, and anyone who's listening, if you didn't get it and you want it right now because you're paying attention, you can certainly shoot us an email, and we'll get it out to you sooner than the next time we send it out, which I would assume will be by Friday.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? Moving on to personnel.
So, appointments are in your new hire packet, and as you can see, there's a lot of them. If you line them up with your list of resignations, you will see why we have a lot of appointments. We have a few positions, and these are sort of behind, so as you get them in your packet, most likely, people who resigned, we've already rehired for them. So, it looks a little overwhelming, but it shouldn't be, because we have hired many of our folks already back. We still have an open position that speaks to, we've had an increase in students with special needs moving into the district. When I say an increase, more than normal, more than usual amount of students with high needs, meaning requiring small group classrooms or out-of-district placements. So, we've had three new out-of-district placements at collaboratives, which means that their tuition and cost for that school leaves the community that was paying for it, and when they move into this community, we begin to pay for it right away, which is unlike students who are in private schools that move here after April first. So, we were crafty enough, Susan and I had a plan when I returned here that we were going to reverse Circuit Breaker to the way that the Department of Revenue strongly recommends you use it. I had that plan to be done within three years. I'm sorry to report that that's a game that I lost, and it took me four years to do it, and we did reverse it. So, the revenue that is coming in from Circuit Breaker is not, is not fully utilized, and the reason you do that is when kids move in from collaborative placements and you're not anticipating the cost of their education, you take the money from Circuit Breaker that's in what I call a Circuit Breaker savings account, and you have that money so that you don't have to go back to the town council and say, hey, we didn't anticipate these three kids moving in, and now we need three hundred thousand from the town. As a longstanding special ed director, I know that special education and anticipation don't actually go hand in hand. So, we reverse Circuit Breaker to have that account available for us for cases like this. Not that I am excited about using it, but that's what we're going to be using it for, and we won't be going back to the town for the money to support those. We've also, because of that increase at the middle school, you'll see a new position on here, and it's for a middle school moderate special needs teacher. Our class for students with autism, which is pretty much a self-contained class, meaning that the students spend the majority of their day with this one teacher, has, was at eleven, which is a higher number than I ever liked to see in a classroom like that. Some of those students were integrated partially during the day, so we were comfortable with it. It jumped up to fifteen by mid-Jul, I'm sorry, by mid-August. So, we do have to take that classroom and split it into two classrooms, which means we have to hire a teacher and an aide to support that. Where is that funding coming from? Welcome to the world of the reverse Circuit Breaker. That's what it's there for, and that's why you do it that way. So, we will not be coming back to the town looking for funds for that position, and that position will also, like I said, need an additional educational support person because of state law binds you to have educational support people in classrooms that are self-contained by the number of students that are in that class. So, we feel confident that we will get that done and be able to really break that classroom out and make it a classroom that is usable and beneficial to our kids. So, we'll have two classrooms instead of, instead of one. And so, if anyone has any questions on the new hire or the resignation list, I'm happy to entertain those. And the postings, as usual, they're a little bit behind in your packet now, especially with the change in our meetings over the past week. We have filled many of the positions that are on here, with the exception of maybe one or two, and I know that one of them is a middle school ESP, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading of the revised policy of smoking tobacco use on school premises and during school activities. I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading, the first reading.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci.
Second.
Second on the Swope. Okay. Any discussion on, there's no discussion. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up is homeschool applications. I'll look to Ms. Gallivan to give us her recommendation on whether or not to accept the applications that have been received for homeschool. Ms. Gallivan?
Yes, so in front of you, you have the list, obviously, without names, of the grades and ages of students who have so far applied. I have a few applications that I am still expecting in that have been taken out, but right now, there are twenty students, primarily for grades one through eight, that have opted for homeschooling this year. I would recommend that all of those that are before you be recommended as accepted, and I will get letters out to them on your behalf showing the acceptance, and I will be meeting with them again mid-year, around January, February, to check on progress and updates with the students and student book.
Just a minute. First, can I get a motion to accept Ms. Gallivan's recommendation to accept the homeschool applications that she has approved?
A second.
So, motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Powell. Now, discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I've got, several parents have talked to me, well, actually, two, have talked to me about the work that you've done with them of this homeschool issue and the support you've given them and the help you've given them, so applaud your efforts, it makes a big difference.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You know, it's a tough decision for a lot of parents and a decision that a lot of them finally have to make, so trying to make it as easy as possible and, you know, as fluid for them to be able to reenter school should they choose to is beneficial to all of us.
And I think that encourages them to return to the school, so it's nice job.
I think another important point around homeschooling for parents who may not understand this is that under child find, we have to reach out to you and find you if your child doesn't come to school. Not everybody is aware of the fact that there's an actual application and approval process that you need to go through. You have, you are entitled to and have every right to homeschool your child. The worry becomes if we don't know about it, and then a year later, you want to return to the school, and we can't prove that you've completed sixth grade because you never contacted us to fill it out, or you didn't answer an email, or we just didn't know about you because you moved here, especially during COVID, there's been a lot of movement. So, if you are a parent of students who have moved to the district and you are homeschooling, please, please, please reach out to us so that we can provide you with the packet of information, register your student, and then approve your right to homeschool. That way, we have an accurate record of your child's progress and can make sure when you do return, if you do, or when it comes time for you to finish school, that we're able to appropriately sign off on that for you. So, that's super important.
Excellent. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote to accept the recommendation of Ms. Gallivan as to the applications that have been submitted for homeschool?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up is unfinished business. We have none. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Ms. Barry. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.